We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. David Buckles.
If we get Ms. Cummings up here, we'll start. And Ms. Jorgensen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ken Johnson from the Boys Ranch will lead us in prayer.
Let's bow our heads and hearts, please. Lord, we thank you for this occasion to celebrate our freedom by participating in meetings to determine our destiny and the destiny of our children, as well as our grandchildren. We ask that you grant clarity of mind, awareness of resources, and a determination to do the right thing in every situation. Help us to be more concerned about gaining and enjoying your blessings upon our community than we are about political correctness. Help us to adhere to the principles in the Word of God that ensure better and safer schools. We covet your attention at this time in this setting and look forward with grateful hearts to this opportunity to work together to gain consensus while pleasing you with our decisions. We ask this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Okay, I haven't received any public comment cards if you were intending...
We're in presentation and everything.
Oh, excuse me, yeah, I jumped ahead of myself, didn't I? We'll have a presentation by Ms. Jorgensen with the Interlock and High School Culinary Arts students.
I have the pleasure, the distinct pleasure, of working with the culinary arts class at IHS every Wednesday afternoon. Through my church, we have a hot meals program every Wednesday to anybody who needs a hot meal. And these kids learn how to serve in the kitchen, how to serve out front, how to clear, all of it, thanks to Chef Tyson, who unfortunately couldn't make it because he's worthy of recognition as well, what he does with these kids. Several weeks ago, and I apologize, I don't have the date, but the students were out in the dining area, and we feed between 30 and 60 people every Wednesday, and they were out in the dining area and someone, a gentleman started choking. I mean, he was going unconscious. And two students leapt into action. He was a big man, from what I understand, but between the two of them, they were able to pick him up, hold him, and do the Heimlich maneuver, or whatever it is. I'd like to bring them up to just give you a little better story, because I missed that Wednesday, of course. Wasn't there to see it and take pictures or videos, but, I mean, it's really amazing. I would've had it all over Facebook. But it's really amazing to think that these students, they didn't even think about it. They just leapt into action, and from what I hear, they saved this man's life. He was down for the count at this point. So I'd like to bring them up now to introduce them. We have Destiny Biller. And Sebastian Bellardino. Look, wait, are you in again? Eleven, ninth, and ninth?
Ten.
These are ninth and 10th graders, too. So they're not our older students, they're our younger high school students. They work hard, Destiny's mom comes and helps, too, often. They work hard and love it. It's amazing how they really love to give to their community, and they've learned at Chef, with Chef Tyson, the reward for giving to the community, too. I want to give the opportunity for both of you to speak. You don't want to tell your story? All right, well, Superintendent's gonna come down and give them certificates, so the four of us will get in the picture, if that's okay.
And I want to recognize Sharon Spell. She's here from their high school, in Oregon High School, and I ask if Sharon would also come down.
Come on, Sharon.
Jane, can I introduce the next one?
You certainly may.
Our next presentation is about the I Love Music Tour, and we have Lefara Davis, who is a Palaca high grad and a favorite person of Palaca, the city of Palaca, and ask her to come up and talk about the I Love Music Tour.
And a former Jaguar cheerleader.
Yes. Well, I don't even have to introduce myself. Yeah, straight out of Palaca, Florida, which I am so proud to represent. I have been so proud. That was my introduction, but anyway, it kind of threw me off my script.
I want to say, too, before you get started, and we're so proud of you, she actually has come back to Palaca and is giving back to our community. She has her own dance studio, and we appreciate everything you're doing for our community.
Thank you, thank you, and that's the desire, to come back, not to go anywhere else, but to come back to my hometown to make a difference, because we need it. So I thank you all, thank you for having me today, but we are here to talk about the I Love Music Tour. I don't know if you all have heard about it, but I put little flyers in your chairs. But back in December, I received the opportunity through the I Love Music Foundation to, one, host and bring a benefit concert to Palaca High School. Not just a concert, but this is an opportunity to highlight the music education programs at the high school. Not only to highlight the music education, but to also give a donation just by allowing us to use their facility. So right now, today, we're here to, one, thank you all for the approval, thank you all for your help and your support that would continue to build the opportunity to bring this music education program. Number two, we're here to give you an insight of the process of where we are now to making this event a success. Number three, we're also here to maybe give you all the insight of how we plan to make, if possible, this a long-term project. We're not just including Palaca High School being the mark, but also including all the schools of Putnam County School District. So not just only our donation from the I Love Music Tour can go to Palaca High School music education, but to also benefit other schools within the district, such as Crescent City High, Interlocken High, and the list goes on. So it's just not to bring a concert, but it's to highlight the music education, to involve the education within the school district of Putnam County. So today, I brought Mr. Michael, who was, who is the CEO and the president of the I Love Music Foundation, and he will give you more information through our presentation.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for, again, for allowing us to have the concert at Palaca High School. It really means a lot to us to bring this show to this county, and just, it's gonna be a really big, big event. I started the I Love Music Foundation back in 2007. I don't know how I would've got out of school without music and going to the band room. Every morning, I was in the band room. After school, I was always in the band room. It was my haven, you know? I played football for a little bit, but our football team never passed, and I was a quarterback, so I was just standing out there waiting, just, I know nothing's coming my way, but in the band, I started, and there was always something going on. I was always the star at that point in time. So I wanted to give back and start something that would, I also went on to work in the music industry. I worked for two record companies. I have a gold record with a couple artists that I've worked with, and how can I marry the two things that I love the most together and help each other? Now, the music industry, when's the last time anyone's bought a CD or a record? Who's bought one lately? Not many people have bought music, so the music industry is having some struggles. The best time for a recording artist is to have live performances, is to get their art out there, and most of our music programs, as you know, are struggling. So here we are, two different people who are struggling, and to bring them together to help bring all, both sides of this business together, up one, that's the birth of the I Love Music Tour. And basically, what we do is we bring national recording artists, I mean, real, live, big international stars. The artist that we're bringing to Palaca High School, his name is Yasta Greatest, he plays Hakeem Lyon on the hit TV show Empire. Yeah, he is a huge international star. He just got through doing a sell-out concert in San Francisco and Chicago, and then in a week and a half, he'll be in Palaca. And also coming with the show is an artist by the name of June's Diary. They're the new group from Destiny's Child, member Kelly Rowland. They had a TV show called Chasing Destiny, where they're trying to create the new Destiny's Child. They will be performing here as well. So this concert would be a top-notch concert anywhere, but it is coming to Palaca High School. So what we want to do is let you know kind of where the process, where we are right now, and how we would love to make this an annual thing here in Palaca, so that you say, oh, who's coming to I Love Music Tour next year? Who's coming next year? That's what our vision is and what we try to do, and it's a pretty simple process of how we do it. Basically, we bring, we take care of everything, the foundation. We book the artists, we take care of the insurance, we take care of the security and everything. All we need from the school is the place to hold the concert, and put up concert posters all through the school and in the community, and give morning announcements. We do everything else with it, and it's a pretty simple process, and we love to expand that and get the word out to the rest of the schools in the district. Right now, the word has got pretty good with Palaca High, and we will also need some assistance in getting the word out to the rest of the district. So we're at the process that we're at right now, we're a week and a half away from the showtime, and we're in the process of getting some, we want to donate, get donations to get the seniors of all the high schools to be able to come free. And that's one of the things we want to give back, is get some donations. We've gotten some already, and we thank everyone who's given so far, and we put the word out to get anyone who wants to donate to help a senior come to this concert and witness this, get a backstage pass to meet an international star, and come and see the setup from, like a concert setup from the ground up, like, we're gonna turn the Commons area from, the Commons area to a world-powered concert arena. So it'd be a good experience for someone to see, something, some of the kids will be able to go and tell their grandparents, you know, down the road.
Do you happen to have a letter with a donation, one corporation that sure would donate, if you had some kind of letter for that?
Yes, ma'am. I think, Miss Pam, where they copy, Miss Pam made copies for us.
Oh, perfect.
If you could pour, she made enough. It's a packet, it's for the board members.
Okay.
Yeah, that packet is basically our introduction packet to the schools, but we can also give you a tailored letter that will go to corporations who are interested in donating for the seniors.
Okay, would you recommend this concert for just high school students or possibly middle? I know, probably not elementary, but...
It's actually an all-age show.
All age?
Yeah, it's 100% clean, everything we do is an all-age show. And the thing that, and I know I got my spark in wanting to be in the music industry when I was in elementary school. So I saw a group once, it was Michael Jackson, in the Jackson Five, dating myself here, but that was it. After that, I was hooked. I was into music, and I joined the band, and I was in the band all through, in college and everything, and I was hooked from that one spark, and that's what I hope to do. I hope to get a young person or young, to see this and get hooked. And a lot of people don't know that, you can actually go to school on a music scholarship, that there are plenty of, there's plenty of money out there on music scholarships that a lot of people don't even know about.
Also, I want to include that not only are the known artists will be performing, but we also have a few of our own Putnam County School District students that will also be opening up for these known artists.
And is there an age limit, so if Jane decided to come?
I'm going.
It's an all-age show.
I'm not performing.
It's an all-age show, and I don't know if you've got, had a chance to see June's Diary. They are incredible singers, incredible. It's gonna be a great, great show. Tickets for Palaca students, whether Putnam County District students, is $20, but for everyone else outside of the students, it's $25.
Yeah, is there a senior citizen?
And we do have tickets this afternoon, if you would like to get one, or give me funds so that we can donate it to a senior that we currently have a list of, or we're getting, in the process of getting that list.
Thank you so much. I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, it's time for public comment, but we don't have any today, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. I need to hear from each board member if there is anything you'd like to pull. Ms. Gilliard?
All of mine are saying yes.
You're okay?
Yes.
Mr. Buckles?
No, ma'am.
Uh, G5.
G5? I have none to pull? Ms. Jorgensen?
No.
Okay, so we will...
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus G5.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Okay.
And this might be, yeah, if you don't mind, Ms. Buckles, I just had a couple questions because, as we've discussed, a lot of the budget constraints and things towards moving forward, this is pretty much the first of probably 18 of these requests that we're gonna get for additional summer days. So I understand it's Title I dollars, and I guess my question to you is, I know they've probably been allocated these dollars set aside for summertime additional hours, but is this money that could roll over to next Title I budget if it wasn't spent?
No, ma'am, it is not, and this, you've already approved, a couple of schools have already asked for that, and there will be more, I assume, forthcoming, but this, these dollars come from the allocations they received last year for this fiscal year.
Okay.
And they have to budget that, and they did that ahead of time, and so they have set these back to hold, to work on this kind of stuff for the summer.
Because I'm gonna actually say, like, is they plan their Title I 2017, 2018 budget? Because when you say, okay, this is just C-LO, and that's one school, that's $4,500.
Yes, ma'am.
If we have, and that's just a small amount, let's say, and most schools do it, 18, that's $81,000, that if we hold that back for Title I dollars, that could pay for basically two additional non-instructional, no, one maybe, one and a half, but my point is that if we always say it's additional five days of work, why would we not just plan those people that need that data analysis as part of their pre-planning and their post-planning? Because we have a staff development day. I guess my point is, is we're trying to be very conscientious of the budget. If next year, we just ask schools, hey, we don't want additional days, we want you guys to work your schedule, we want to save that money to pay for an additional staff member, or, I mean, it's Title I dollars, you see what I'm saying? I mean, it just, I guess I'm just making, the more I look at little things like that, like $81,000, that's five extra days for every school, and it's gonna be probably closer to 100, because this is only three employees, whereas Palaca High's gonna have additional days, Interlocken High, they have maybe six or seven, you know what I'm saying, additional staff members, so...
I don't believe this, I don't believe this would save the district money, because in the process of allocating dollars to the schools, they are entitled to X amount of dollars.
Right.
If we do not let them spend that on this kind of need, they will just spend that on something else.
Correct, which is, okay, and one thing I keep hearing...
So it's not gonna reduce their allocation?
Right, it's not that, I guess not, and this is basically an example, I'm not gonna even talk about this year's budget, because it's allocation, but next year, 2017, 2018, when we've already been told Title I budget is probably gonna be cut by 10%, so I want to send a clear message that when we're gonna be cut by 10% with Title I dollars, this has gotta stop in the 17, 18 budget.
Well, I guess that would be something that the management team and you as a board would direct, and if y'all direct that, then I will follow your direction.
And how many days are we talking for each school?
Everybody varies. In this one, I don't, let's see, they ask...
This one's five, but...
And they want to disaggregate that.
It's five for three different people, but each school is gonna be different.
My question is, Deborah, could this be already part of what, they just, their salary?
Their staff development day.
No, because these people are not paid out of Title I throughout, most of them are not paid throughout, with Title I dollars throughout the year.
So they could, we couldn't say, this is just part of your job description, you've got to be here these extra days. We couldn't do that. Okay, well, I was asking, I don't know.
Well, but if it was the staff development day that we give them before, we have seven or eight days pre-planning, so if these four or five people say...
They're not needed until afterwards.
Yeah, they have two or three days. I'm just saying, worst-case scenario, type, type, Title I.
They would be needed more, I would think, post-planning than pre-planning, because you're gonna have your FSA data at that point.
If they were able to say, you know what, the principal's gonna allow them to come to pre-planning two or three days late, because they're staying in post-planning and do this data analysis.
Gotcha.
I'm just saying...
And I've got a question.
Y'all would have to work out with negotiations, and, yeah, we don't.
Well, no, I understand that, but it would be a, you could call it...
What do you mean, they don't have post-planning?
Call it, no, I mean, call it a voluntary...
I know, but I didn't know we didn't have post-planning days. What happened to those?
Negotiated.
We have a...
I mean, that's when I always did all my work.
They were negotiated.
But this decision is driven by the time, by time, when the test results end, that's the only time that you can...
No.
They do this during the summer, so they can disaggregate the data.
They look at what they have coming in from, from the various tests. They've taken to make some decisions for next year, possibly looking at which teacher had the highest scores here, if that teacher's gonna, so making decisions for next year, even though these children will go on to Jenkins, they will be able to make plans as far as the staff, the personnel.
And they'll be looking at data coming in from the elementary schools that are gonna feed into them as well.
Yes, they're feeder schools.
I'm very glad that it's Title I money we can use for this.
Yes, ma'am.
And not general fund.
We, we discussed this in the budget workshop that we had, and, you know, it's, it is a goal to, if at some point you get to the, to having to move personnel, it might be of the superintendent's discretion to roll people out of Title I and others into those positions, so, you know, we're kind of fluid in that right now, and we know it is gonna be cut from the state, I mean, from the federal government, but it is not, you know, that would have to come from the superintendent, I mean, we could, the federal government money is so convoluted, it is really, it's a mess.
You can't just put somebody in there... I'm sorry, sir.
You can't just put somebody in there and just tell them to sit there for a while and go ahead and do your old duties, because they will, they will get you and you will pay back money, it doesn't play that way.
This would be a great discussion during the workshop on the 18th. The reason it's coming to you is, is this is beyond the contract. Anything that people get paid beyond the contract, whether it's a stipend for PD, it comes to you because you have to approve that.
Right.
It's not the concept, it's the approval of paying people money. This money has already been designated to the schools. Principals need to be able to run the schools the way they feel like they need to be run.
Absolutely.
It's coming to you because of the fact that it goes beyond that contract.
And it wouldn't be an issue if we weren't, our budget?
But this is... But it is designated to the school, and it is the school's ability to do that, and I think we need to be careful, because we're gonna be talking about Title I funds, title funds, and those are things that are probably best left for that workshop and how we handle title funds, but I will say that it is designated to the schools by ratio that must be followed by the federal government, and when you give that, that money to them, there are things they can do. They can hire staff.
Right.
We don't mandate they do certain things, okay? So we have to be careful when we're talking about, could they save this, and we don't approve this, and it comes to you truly, because it's beyond contract.
Right.
I can't, we can't be on contract.
Even though it's been designated, we still have to approve it.
Correct.
And this is part of their Title I budget, too. I mean, when they do their annual budget.
When they do their annual budget, I give them a list of allowable costs and a spreadsheet that they have to fill out, and they submit to us.
So they, we know that ahead of time.
Like Shannon and Kim and Martha that helped put all that in the Skyward, and so, yeah, these are their dollars, individual school dollars.
So the team disaggregates data as well?
Sure, I think at a school, you can have whoever's really good at that kind of stuff disaggregating data.
Yeah, it was just more of insight and planning for 2017 and 18.
That's what I heard your question was, more like going forward, you might not want to see this kind of thing, and...
I would not, not approve this anyway, I would not vote against this, but in the future, when I hear that your budget's cut by 10%, if that is the case, then 20, I will, I don't care if you put it aside, it is a board decision, and I don't care if the money's been put aside, I'll, I'll vote against it next year. If your budget's cut by 10% and you're continuing to do these extra days, I don't, I don't agree with it, you know what I'm saying?
Well, it'd be more important that some frivolous thing they spend it on.
Exactly, but if it's...
Each school will have to make some pretty serious decisions if the 10% reduction...
But this may be how they want to spend their money.
A discussion, right, but when 10% cut...
When you talk about this later.
Yeah, it's just a 10% cut projection, and that's why I wanted to, and this will be the last time I pull it, because I know there's gonna be at least, every school does it every year.
We've already had several go through, and then, yeah, we'll have some more.
Yeah, and that's good, I just wanted to kind of...
Well, principals will have to make priorities next year.
Yes, sir.
When it's leaner, and chances are, they may choose not to do that.
Right.
Their money may need to be all in personnel, strictly all personnel.
But if it's their choice, we still, okay, let's just say it doesn't, let's just say we, we don't approve it today, that 4,500, that principal will spend it on something else? Okay, so, yeah.
So it's gonna be spent, yeah.
Right, it's still gonna be spent, because it's in his budget, or you're saying that budget could not roll over?
Not the schools, it would, there can, there can be rolled forward for Title I, but the schools' allocations need to be spent in order to keep them in what we call rank and serve.
Right.
So, yeah, they need to spend their money. I'm after them right now, right? We're dogging them every day.
Okay, and that's what I wanted clarity on as far as the rollover, so I make a motion to approve, I am G5.
Second, ma'am. Did you second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Okay, let's move on now to discussion of new business. Budget amendments for 2017, Shannon?
Okay, for January 2017, in the general fund, there was a budget increase of $27,450. This consisted of $26,450 for charter school capital outlay that was transferred in to appropriate to the charter schools, and $1,000 donation from Seminole Electric. For the capital projects funds, there was an increase of $26,450, and this was from receipt of charter school capital outlay dollars. In school food service, there was no change. In the special revenue fund, there was a total increase of $532,245. $280,859 was from Title I Part A. $1,748 was an increased award in the SIG grant. $218,158 was from Title I Part C, and $31,480 was from a Job Transition Coach Grant. In the special revenue fund miscellaneous, there was a total increase of $251,231.3. $224,958.3 was from the Florida Best and Brightest Teacher Scholarship, and $26,273 was from the District Instructional Leadership Grant. For the internal service funds, there was an increase of $185,915.49. $578 of that was from information technology to appropriate collected revenues to different accounts, and $185,337.49 was from a virtual professional development grant. Is there any questions?
I have none.
All right.
Thank you. Virtual professional development for school board members, that's NIFAC. That last one, virtual, if you read it, number under 28, virtual professional development for school board members, $185,000 went to NIFAC.
Yes, and I'm on the focus group that, that's working on developing that program.
Great. Okay. We need a motion for this?
No.
To accept the budget amendments? I'm a motion we approve the budget... Yeah, I'm a motion we approve the budget amendments.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The next is discussion input and action to appoint a board member, an alternate board member, and a citizen representative to the Putnam County Value Added Adjustment Board. And I'll go ahead and tell you that Judd Newfeld has agreed to again be our, um, Putnam County, our citizen representative.
Okay.
Now we need to choose a board member who would like to be on this. Why? You haven't had a turn yet.
I, uh.
Have you?
Sure.
When?
He's too important.
I did it this past year.
Years ago, I've been to meetings.
Years ago.
We've got, we've got some new mo, we've got some new board, a new board member that really.
You're a new board member, too, if you do chronological stuff.
But you tell me I'm old as dirt.
Sandy, would you be interested in it?
I will be interested in serving as the alternate.
I'll be on it.
I'll do.
You'll do it?
Sure.
Okay.
And I will be the alternate.
Okay, Ms. Jorgensen has agreed to be our, uh, board member, and Ms. Gilliard will be our alternate, if you will let the appropriate people know, Ms. Formanee and Ms. Douglas. Okay, next is discussion input and action on Putnam Edge High School lease termination notification.
Could the check, the term?
Mr. Bowen, if you have any questions, Mr. Bowen is available.
Okay, basically, uh, at the end of the physical year, we were going to exercise our, uh, option to terminate their, or notify them that they have one year, um, and that would be effective July first. And I don't think a date was actually included on the memo, but it should be effective July one, if I understand that correctly, that the sunset date.
That's right, yes.
Okay.
So from July one of this year, they would have one year.
Correct.
Left on their lease.
Correct.
Okay.
Basically because Mr. Tucker needs the space.
That's CLO.
Hmm, right.
CLO?
Yes, ma'am.
They need the space.
They need the space.
The sixth graders coming in.
Yes.
I make them up.
Does anybody have any questions?
Well, is anyone from the board?
Lisa, is there anything you want to say?
Definitely, we want to hear from them.
You guys going to be okay with that? Lisa? I mean, I know we talked about it last year, year before, and I know, I know, I know.
Hated charter schools.
Lisa Parsons, Director of Putnam Edge High School, and, um, we, we hope to be moving on by the next step, so that certainly is a goal for us. Um, we are, will be financially solvent by the end of this year and financially thriving by the end of the next year, we hope. So, um, I think that it's a good plan. Um, also, you know, trying, we don't know what that next step is, but that, that puts my board on the spot to get busy to, to, you know, grab hands with somebody and.
Light a little fire.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, great. Thank you, Lisa.
Absolutely, and Mr. Boldy and I did talk earlier as well, and it was just a miscommunication about the date, so there was absolutely no problem there.
Okay, great.
And you are okay with that, that year that gives you the opportunity to see?
They got to get busy.
Absolutely, that and/or even a stronger partnership with the district. Um, we do, we really need to look at the, at the students and what is, what is the greatest need? Um, I'm so very excited. I can't wait to, uh, to tell you what the Sheriff's Department is doing, working with us, bringing, bringing in the nine-one-one operator, um, certification, as well as a personal trainer certification. We've got, um, a couple of kids that that is the only reason they want to come to school next year, because I want to be part of that. So whenever we can find those things, and then we actually added the emergency medical responder, um, test, that we're a certified testing center for that. So any of the students who did complete their nursing, uh, core courses through any of the other high schools, we sent an invitation for them to be able to challenge the test with us should they desire, and we haven't had any takers yet, but we hope, uh, kind of get the word out to them, what is it? Send the study guide over to them and, and see if they're interested in challenging that test.
Is that a Pearson View testing center, or is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And this year you have your first graduating class, or is it next year?
So we, um, we had five seniors last year that were a grade ahead of us, and we did officially graduate them, all five in college, so one hundred percent in college. Um, and we did recently achieve our recommendation for accreditation, which was huge. You all have been through that, every one of you have, and so you know how much hard work it takes to make that happen. Um, Dr. Matthew Olson, who's worked very closely with us, he's, um, he continues to, to be amazed at the things that, that we do with the kids there, and how hard our staff works to teach so many subjects, and that is, that's just huge, and why they would choose to stay there, um, in, in that environment, when they could go to any of your schools for you and teach one or two subjects, and yet they stay there and teach three, four, or five courses.
Yeah, have that many preps is hard.
But it is, is a neat environment, small where the, the students know and develop relationships with those instructors, and I will tell you, it's, we, we don't play the, the mommy daddy game with the kids that are running back and forth to the different schools. I'm in close communication with Mandy Bernie today at Lake High to, to try to talk about the student that's doing that, bouncing back and forth, and, um, we.
It's not easy for either side.
It's not, and the kid loses out, so we, we do want to work closely.
Well, I really think that charter schools have a really important place in our educational system, and this board is in charge of educating K through twelve students in our.
Across the district.
District. Across the district. I really think that Edge has done a great job. I've been there several times. The kids love it. I mean, right there, just that alone. They love the school, they love coming to school, they love working at the school.
That's one of, one of the neatest things.
More of a partnership, this nine eleven, nine-one-one, you're not supposed to say eleven, nine-one-one thing sounds wonderful if you get it in one of our high schools, too. I mean, it should be a partnership. It shouldn't be antagonistic. Would you mind giving us, oh, I'm sorry.
Weren't you a first responder in a previous life?
A previous life, absolutely. I, I was a paramedic, uh, before I entered education, and it, it is dear to me. Um, but nine-one-one operator is not for everybody. That is a very intense world. In fact, we had a representative.
What's her name?
Yep, a representative from the Sheriff's Department that brought us the sex offender, um, workbook and resources recently, and she said, that's where I started. And, and she said, but it wasn't for me because I couldn't help them the way I wanted to. You've got to follow the script, you've got to do, follow your training, and.
But there are students that, that's right up their alley.
Absolutely, and we have several that, that we believe would thrive with that.
Would you briefly, um, tell us how the four-day, school days, school weeks go?
It's, it's, it's very unique. Um, the first few times, so my staff is there every other Monday, and we have made a few adjustments based on, based on holidays since we made the initial calendar, but we make sure and get, get that word out. Um, we have students who choose to come, um, to say, I have work I need to do. I need to make up work, or I need help. We've also, um, you see Paula Crawford with me, we work very closely with the, with the truancy kids and say, you've missed this much time, you must make it up on Monday or Tuesday and Thursday afternoons. We also have, have that time, opportunity for students that need that extra help or that they need to make up time. Often it's the parent who says, nah. And so, you, all of you know that the parents are often the biggest barrier, more so than the student, but that has worked very well. We are, we are holding them very tight to the, um, the ten-day child study team meeting because they don't have the number of days. While they still have the number of minutes, but you miss a day, you're missing more. A kid misses four days in a month, you've missed a whole week of school. So we are working very hard to try to, and that is one of our goals, and that's part of my evaluation, is are we improving, proving that? Because it's one of our goals, that, you know, it's going to come back to me, too. So that, the four-day week, we think, has been very productive. We will, from the very beginning next year, we want to make sure that it is set in policy that if they missed five days, that you will serve a Monday per, per miss. After that, you've got that five days upfront, but now every time you miss a day, you must make that up on a Monday to make up minutes, not just, people, people say, well, I've done all my work now, I don't want to have anything else to do now. Well, I can find something for you to do.
You've got some seat time to make up.
Absolutely, and that seat time, um, I have one today that I was working with, and on St. John's River State College, if you go to their career, um, section, they have these, uh, step one, two, three, that helps the kid walk through what are my gifts, talents, and interests, and what jobs exist that they may never even have heard of. Um, one of the other things that Ms. Crawford has them doing is the, um, march to success. Um, so they're completing something specific. Got, well, I don't have any work to do. Okay, march to success, then. You've expressed interest in military, here's a route, and they're so excited to actually be doing something that they're, they're interested in, so.
So did I hear you say your staff's not there every Monday?
Every other Monday.
Wow.
Every other Monday, um, my staff is there, and, and I will tell you, Mr. Nunnemaker and several, most of us have, have worked nearly every Monday anyway, whether we're on campus or, or, or there, but offering that time for the students. Several of my teachers choose to come anyway because they teach so many subjects, they need that time. Some work better from home and some work better from, from school, but every other Monday, and you can check our, either our Facebook page or, um, or our school calendar from our, our, um, webpage to get the dates that were there.
Yeah, all right.
And we have a list of the graduations for the three highs, well, the four high schools with QI. Uh, have you set your date yet?
We have, June third, and, um, I'll, I'll be sure and, and send that to you as well, and that will be at this, at, um, Jim Pignato Auditorium on June third. I would like to invite all the board members to attend, and I will send you an invitation for that.
Thank you, Lisa.
I, I would really like to congratulate you guys. You've come a long way.
Yes, sir.
And it has been a rocky road for you guys.
It's been tough, but I will tell you, listen to, listen to this data. Twenty-eight graduating seniors. Fifteen of those twenty-eight have done dual enrollment. Fifteen of twenty-eight.
Wow.
Wonderful.
We have seven that will complete their, their CNA path, and we have eleven that will complete the Microsoft path, out of twenty-eight.
That's great.
So, we're, we're very, very proud, and that's, that's our core group that started at the beginning all the, all the way through with us, but.
All the bumps.
But our guy, our five guys who graduated last year, they are, they are Edge. That's what they say. I even had one, uh, send me a text just, just a couple of weeks ago. He's in, in college at Warner University on a golf scholarship. The, the presentation in his class, it said something about Edge, and he sent me a text from his classroom and said, I am Edge. And.
Wonderful.
Thank you for working with us.
Yes, thank you. So someone, please make a. I'll make a motion that we approve, um, to give Edge High School one-year notice to terminate their lease as of July first, two thousand seventeen. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have discussion input and action on discontinuing transportation for daycare facilities within a two-mile radius.
Wait a minute.
No, we pulled that.
Updated, oh, they pulled it?
I thought we pulled four.
We pulled it.
Pulled four, okay, didn't know it, sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
So we own, uh, daycare within a two-mile radius or?
Yes.
Secondary students?
We're on daycare. Daycare facilities.
Okay, and the idea here is, uh, that the daycare facilities themselves will transport the children, not that the children have to get out there and walk. Uh, we've had equity issues, um, throughout the district, you know, some people enjoy the, the free rides and some don't.
Right.
And, and I know you've had several public comments to address, uh, concerning that.
Yes.
Um, so we want to make that a little bit equitable next year, or make it equitable next year, but at the same time, um, which is most important, we're trying to free up routes and drivers. We, we continue to suffer from a, um, lack of bus drivers here in our district, and, um, this will go a long way in helping alleviate that concern.
And I read your letter, and it, it spelled out just what we, uh, are hoping to do, so it told them the time, it told them why we had to do this, you know, when times were, uh, better than they are now and not as lean or as bleak as the future looks, so, I mean.
Right.
They can understand it. It was written so that they can understand.
Our intent is to send those letters as soon as we get approval, uh, just so everyone will have plenty of time to, uh, prepare.
Make arrangements.
And, you know, if.
But it won't, won't begin until next school year.
Next school year, the letter said.
Let me ask a question. Shannon, what was the total we would save with these transportation changes? Does anyone remember offhand approximately, Thomas?
I thought the whole point of this was because Mr. Franco wasn't getting his daycare serviced, and now, are we going to service him with kids over two miles? No, because he's on seventeen, so he's going to be back.
I don't think so.
No, no, he, remember, he said to us, I want what everyone else is getting, and so now that no one else is giving it.
No, we're not. It says two miles. Oh, he's. So if he has students that are two and a quarter miles from his daycare facility.
What we mean is the facility is less, if the facility is less than two miles from the school, then we won't transport, and his facility is within that two-mile radius. As a matter of fact, district-wide, all daycare facilities are within the two-mile radius with the exception of one, I think.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes, ma'am.
Thomas, what was the approximate figure that we would save with all these?
Once again, I wasn't looking at this from a cost-saving stand, standpoint, just to, uh, free up drivers.
Well, we had a, we had a, an amount in that workshop, and.
But that was for two miles, for the district, right?
Yeah, well, even with the two miles.
We can get that for you, can't we? Can we get that together, Rodney, for the eighteenth?
Yeah, let's do that because I have really had some, I, I've, I've had some complaints.
And I think when I, he explained it, Rodney, it took me a minute to, to digest that, but we basically get so much money per student and we're not getting that money. So we're really not saving the money. We're not saving money. We're just.
Well, that's, that's true.
We're spending it, though.
We're not having to spend additional money, and we have to make lots of adjustments, um, because when you don't have drivers, we're going to have to start, this is going to be my plan, just thinking of moving forward. We're going to start with the outermost areas and work in, and then we run out of people and routes, then we may have to expand some of that two-mile. But when you do not have people to go and pick up kids, then you cannot have routes, unless you work on some kind of system to where you do double runs, and then you're spending more money.
Double runs or twice the cost.
When you're looking at the people less than two miles, if you can't get them the first time, then you've got to go back and do a double. That's where your extra money comes in. When those students do not bring in money to the district, then you're not, you're not spending anything. You're not gaining, you're not getting additional money, you're just not putting out more money.
And we're not, we're not to the next item, so actually, I, I, I figure around six hundred thousand dollars.
I was right here. I don't, I don't know if there is a way to accurately calculate a cost savings.
Yes, because we had a per-head cost, but at one point.
It was six hundred and something.
That we would save?
Yes. Because, yeah, because my court, my concern, I've never, and I'm, I'm like all of you guys, we worry about these kids in these, these outlying areas and their safety, and, and I know Thomas.
Once again, once, once, once again here, the, uh, the, the antennas for the daycare providers, and most of them already have vans, and if I have a parent, uh, if I'm a parent of a student at a, at a elementary school, if my daycare won't pick my kid up, I'll find someone who will.
Well, and my, and my point is, this consumes the next item, and I probably should have waited till then, but we'll go ahead and.
We can discuss that one, while he's up here.
Let's just discuss it because we got, you're going to have to be up here for several of these. Rodney, uh.
Calling for you, Mr. Simons.
Well, I don't know if, he may want to come back up.
Don't we have to do something with?
We will, we have to do four, five, and six, but while he's up here, we might as well hit them all. We, we were looking at around six hundred thousand dollars. I've never, and I know the board's never really, really sought to put a child in any way in a, in, in, out on Fowler Avenue or back in, in Houdal Ridge or somewhere, down in, down in Branniger and Whispering Pines, out in a, in an area that was just secluded and dark and not lit, waiting on a bus in predawn hours, and those are concerns that we had, but when we looked at six hundred thousand dollars, helping us not have to, to either have a riff or roll personnel, then I, I think, if I remember correctly, we felt very positive about that. So if, if, in the next budget hearing, if we could get Rhonda to once again give us that per-student.
Well, again, I'm asking, I'm asking that, that, you know, you don't look at this through the eyes of saving money, but freeing up bus, bus drivers.
Yeah.
Well, in fact, we're doing both. In fact, it's, it's a, it's a win-win because we are, in fact, saving money if we stop transporting.
Natural.
Less than two miles.
That dollar amount come in when we're transporting nine hundred students that we do not get funding for.
That's six hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Students plus the allocation that we get, that's where it translates.
I thought it was in the six hundred thousand dollar range.
But it's not that we're not, we're not going to save the money. We're, we're transporting nine hundred kids that we get no state funding for, which is seven hundred dollars per student. So the fact is that we're not going to add all that to the route when we're short on drivers, and there's several drivers doing double routes now. That's so frustrating to me. I, on FSA day, third graders, I'm looking, they're late to school because we didn't have a driver. They had to double a route. I said, oh, my gosh, I hope Rodney's out there driving. I mean, it's awful.
Somebody tell me that Rodney should be out there driving.
It happens every.
I would think that.
Day, so. It happens every day, so, it's not about, it's about those nine hundred kids...
Mr. Simons and myself are behind the wheel of a bus.
Just as long as I don't have to.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that, um, we discontinue transportation for daycare facilities within a two-mile radius of the schools.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes.
Five-zero.
Five-zero, thank you. Um, discussion, the next one, number six, and the last one, uh, discussion input and action on discontinuing courtesy transportation of secondary students within a two-mile radius. David, is this the one you had concerns about?
Well...
Talking secondary students.
You're talking secondary students.
Close to the school.
I was talking on, uh, within the two-mile radius. I, I don't have a problem on within the two-mile radius because I feel certain that Thomas and Rodney will do what we've asked, and they will go out and look for any hazardous conditions and really research that at the board's request. My next would be the, the next one.
The next one?
Yeah, the next one is the courtesy transportation.
That's what we're talking about, David, that's it.
I thought we just voted on, we, okay, okay, courtesy, well, I'm, I'm good now.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we approve discontinuing courtesy transportation of secondary students within a two-mile radius of their school as of the next semester.
Seventeen, eighteen school year.
Seventeen, eighteen school year, and get letters out as soon as possible.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the most, motion passes five-zero.
And the, and the only reason I voted aye is because that will save enough money that it'll keep from disrupting the, the instructional program in our schools all year.
I think this board is looking to save money outside the classroom and outside of, like you said, a riff.
Right.
Heaven forbid.
Don't want that.
So, I think we're looking to save money wherever we can, outside of, at the actual education of the kids, and this is a good way, and it's gonna really help Rodney, and that's what we all want to do.
I wanna see him drive a bus.
Yeah, I wanna go wait.
Thank you, Thomas, thank you, Rodney.
He won't even look at me.
Okay, it's time for our, uh, board reports. May I start with Ms. Gilliard? I, I just always like to start on my left, do you want me to start on my right?
Well, you usually shake it up a little.
We've pretty much experienced the same thing, so...
Yeah, I'll start with Nikki.
I'll start with Nikki, yes.
Yes, we just got back from Tallahassee, we had a great time meeting with our representative, Bobby Payne and Keith, um, Senator Keith Perry, which, by the way, he's, and I don't even think he's told anybody, so this is hot off the press, 'cause he told us, and we always believe when a senator says this.
Right.
It's, he's asking that Pub, Putnam be one of his pilot programs for music education, he's working on appropriation, and he's almost positive it's gonna happen, so he's gonna somehow...
We're very excited about that.
...find money for, um, music teachers for educate, um, and I was like, "Like this, are you kidding me?" Like, so, he was like, "Oh, yeah, Pu- Putnam's one of my pilot counties," so I was like, "Yes," so I don't know.
He seemed excited about it, so we'll see.
Yeah, it was very exciting, we'll see what happens again.
We were having breakfast.
First I've heard it.
And we were having breakfast, and I recall seeing him at one of the forums, and remember exactly what he shared and said as far as education is concerned, and so I caught his attention and beckoning him that I'm over.
Yes, and we got him.
And he came over and just talked with us extensively.
We need to sing y'all up there again.
And then, we got to get in his office.
I have two witnesses here, Sandy, she's like, "Okay, we wanna meet with you," she gave her cell number, and we called, and then he's gonna give us music teachers, we're like, "What's this guy?"
I'm like Cuba Gooding in that movie, you know, "Show me the money."
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, I thought you were like Radiohead.
But it was a great experience, we learned a lot, and I'm thankful to be able to, um, be part of, you have to embrace the process, going to these sessions and listening to all the discussions and politics of...
And some of them.
Yeah, it's very, so, you gotta embrace it.
Remember that one, Sandy?
So, I was thankful for the trip and thankful for the experience.
Well, good.
Thanks.
We did have a good time. Mr. Buckles?
Uh, I've got a granddaughter trying out for cheerleading at Palacka High this afternoon.
Oh, gosh, I hope she makes it.
Uh, you know, we got, I got a couple of them in a talent show.
Oh, yeah.
At James A. Long on Friday, and...
The twins?
The twins are gonna be dancing and...
Oh, I need to go see that.
Jenna's gonna be singing, so that oughta be something to see.
What time is that?
I don't know. I've got it, but I don't...
Well, let me know.
You know, so...
Ms. Jorgensen?
Happy birthday to Alan Muir.
Yes, happy birthday.
Happy birthday. I only know 'cause it's my husband's birthday, too. Expulsions, did you notice? Ten out of school, one bus, and we're talking about closing Solution Center. So, the number's only gonna go up, folks. Now, I would like to ask that we have a workshop on Solution Center, and there's gotta be, if we close Solution Center, then...
What?
We're gonna do this. So, if we could have some kind of present, and it doesn't have to be now, it could be in months, 'cause it might take some time, but I'd really like to, 'cause I've been the champion of Solution Center, however, I'll be the first one to tell you, it's not working, we're letting them be 25 times.
Well, we're actually looking at a, a couple of different models that we're gonna present to you.
Good.
Yeah.
Good, okay, there's another workshop I would like to, um, well, we don't need a workshop, but we were talking about charging Edge rent next year, so we have to talk about that at some point.
We put, they pulled...
That's not...
We're not gonna do that, we're just gonna kick them out. Sorry.
We're not gonna charge them rent this year.
We're not gonna charge them rent this year.
We're gonna let them drive buses in exchange.
Okay, yeah, well, we'll use the kids to drive buses.
Yeah, Lisa can drive a bus.
And then another thing we really need to work, I hate to workshop you to death, folks.
I don't mind them.
David, I know loves them, so, another one we need...
I don't mind them when we can do them in the morning.
You're gonna love this.
I like them in the morning.
Well, we could have it in the morning, just not too early. Um, code of conduct, and it passes by us, and it's so...
We need to review it.
Extensive, and I think that might be Travis, but we also need to know when it's statute, and we have no choice, because a lot of these things, the statute says if they do this, then we have to do that. So, that would be very helpful as we go over anything we have any leeway with, but I really think this board in particular needs to have a workshop so we can really look at our code of conduct.
It's a good idea. Oh, it's gonna take that long?
Yes, two mornings maybe, whatever, but I would like, I mean, the board approves it, I'd like us to look at it, it's important.
I just don't like...
We do policy and we do budget, and that's what we should be talking about.
I just don't like to be up here eight o'clock at night.
And budget, of course, is budget. Um, and that's all. Thank you very much.
No, Ms. Gilliard?
No, I was just gonna say kinda ditto to what Nikki said, uh, very informative, uh, everything to me is an eye-opener, 'cause I'm the Neil fight, but I go, uh, and I try to be a sponge and absorb everything, but some of it later for it. But anyway, um, when our children are involved, I'll, I'll go and pick up as much as I possibly can, and just thank you for the opportunity again to serve.
Good stories on him.
Sorry.
Shane was talking.
I was, I was trying to find out somebody's name.
Nobody, I listened.
I did, I knew what she was talking about.
Alright, uh, what we'll do is have a workshop, uh, on this, and we will talk about, you know, a, a bowl up here.
Yes.
A hundred dollars possibly when you're out of order, and we can give it to our schools.
Well, I had to get, I had to give four dollars at Kiwanis today, so I've got some ones.
Hey, so, we, no, we're not talking ones, we're talking hundreds.
Well, you're already talking about a hundred thousand dollar payout. Okay, uh, and I would like to thank everyone, um, for the opportunity of going to Tallahassee and speaking with, uh, Senator Perry and our own Bobby Payne, our representative, it was delightful. Um, school board members from all over the state of Florida were recognized on the Senate floor by Senator Bill Motford, that was very special, and I got to see my two cousin senators, Rob Bradley and Aaron Bean, that was pretty cool seeing everybody in action. Um, I don't want you to forget that there is a Hoedown Friday at the Fairgrounds.
Already bought tickets.
Good.
Are you gonna leave us some cakes?
I buy hundreds of dollars worth of cakes every year, so, probably so. Um, it begins at five, right, John? John will be cooking french fries, and they're the, you're not?
I'm cooking, but I'm a little burnt.
Well, it starts at five.
Starts when the fries are done.
And he cooks really good french fries, um, starts at five, it's a lot of fun for all of your family, all your kids, there's lots to do, and it's a fundraiser for Jenkins FFA and then the Palacka High School and the Jenkins Middle School archery teams, and we, uh, that leads on to that, we are going to Kentucky for Nationals in May, and this helps facilitate that trip.
That's great.
So, there's a lot going on from now until the end of school, um, we got our, what you call it, a calendar today, and it's like four pages long of stuff we've got to do, so...
A lot of things that aren't on there yet.
Yeah, and this is not even all of it, this is not even all of it, so, um, there's a lot, lot to keep us busy.
That's the fun stuff.
Yeah, that is the fun stuff. Seeing all the wonderful things our kids do.
Nikki, Nikki said she never hears me speak about Kentucky or archery, but I'm planning on going.
He has never gone before.
Oh, thank you.
Well, I have a granddaughter that plays second in the state, and I, she'll be representing us in Kentucky.
You better be there.
'Cause we ought to be in the sunshine.
I'm gonna ride with my daughter.
Well, like Superintendent told Sandra and myself, well, he told me, we were leaving to go to Tallahassee and we rode together.
Oh, yeah.
And he said, "Now, make sure you keep those visors up so you stay in the sunshine."
Mr. Douglas?
Everything is going well in the legal department, um, and we're continuing to work through some, uh, exciting projects, and I'll have more to report later.
Okay, thank you.
And speaking of archery, it's my turn, right?
Yeah.
Speaking of archery, we are gonna recognize the, the Palacka High and Jenkins Archery students on May the 2nd, there was a little confusion.
A little glitch.
But we will, we're gonna recognize them right before they go off to, uh, compete in the Nationals, so that'll be a great time, very proud of that. And, uh, also wanna point out, we are, uh, don't forget, we have a budget workshop scheduled on the eighteenth, and I believe that's at two o'clock, and our staff is gonna come back and answer some of the questions that you asked us in the last workshop, and even come up with some additional ideas, uh, for you to consider. And we're also talking in our superintendent advisory meetings, we have one tonight at IHS, we had one last night at Crescent City High, had one last week in this room for the Central, so we're soliciting ideas from our business community and, you know, parents and so forth, and, you know, getting a lot of great ideas, and we'll bring those back to you as well, so, we wanna make sure that...
And I, I would like for you to say, tell them what the CEO, was it the CEO from the hospital, that, what he said about, you know, them having to go through the same thing?
Yeah, Chris Mosley, the CEO at, at the hospital indicated, he says, "I, I have a real appreciation for the, what you're going through, cutting the budget," 'cause they have to do that from time to time. The only difference is, we have to be public about it.
Yeah.
They can do theirs in private, but we're in the public, so, that's just part of what we deal with. So, and finally, I want, um, have a very important announcement, um, that I wanna bring to you. We recently found out that, um, Mosley Elementary, as, I think you probably already heard this, uh, had the highest VAM scores in our district, and...
Wow.
They are doing some great work there, and, uh, which basically means that they're able to grow their students instructionally on standards mastery, uh, more than they, the predicted amount of growth, so, you know, that's a great achievement.
Yes.
And I believe their principal's in the back.
Stand up.
Peggy Green, congratulations, Ms. Green, stand up, be recognized.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And while Peggy's here, I want to announce, because of their accomplishment, uh, our staff is gonna be developing a plan where Mosley will become our first magnet school in our district, and, uh, we don't want to give you all in, all the information right now, but what we would like to ask you is, would you like to have a workshop on the situation, or would you like a presentation? Which would you prefer?
I'd like a presentation.
I'd like a presentation.
Presentation.
Then if we don't, and then if we have questions, then we might could go to...
Sure. So, we will, uh, agenda that and, uh, come to you with a presentation about what our plan is and run that by you, but, you know, it's an exciting time for Mosley, a lot of